Okay, this is one of our public meetings as we are working through our budget process. You see there on the agenda, Joe has provided the link, so if you've got a tablet or smartphone, you can pull that link up and you can look at that budget. This budget is a work in progress. All departments are still working through this, and so we will have more meetings. And we will finalize this budget between now and the end of September. So we have everything ready to go October 1st. But many times citizens want to speak and address the local government about concerns about the county when it comes to budget policy. I want to say that we have had a good start this year with the budget. We have worked through with our constitutional officers and their budgets are pretty well done as far as the big scope of the total dollars. We may have to tweak the line items a little bit where there's some detail, just to break the detail out a little bit more. But overall, they have been great to work with. We've had budget meetings with them, and we're now working through the department level. And you can see here, we've got about 38 pages, and as this thing builds out, it'll be about 100 pages of detail. But one of the nice, unique benefits about this system is we can show prior year history. So when you look at the budget, you can see the 2015 actual expenditures per line item, per department. And then you've got 2016, 2017, the 18 adopted budget, the 2018 amended budget of the changes that was made along the way. We didn't increase the overall budget as a whole, but we did move some funds around to take care of needs. But we've kept that budget balanced throughout the entire year. And then you've got the 2019 department request of what the departments are requesting per line item. And again, as they go through and tweak these, this is a fluid-moving document at this time. There's other departments that we will be updating every couple of days on the website. So you can keep that link, and as departments are meeting with us internally and we release that data, you'll be able to see that on the link and see this thing build up to about 100 pages. So is this time, we'll open up the floor if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns about the budget. So at this time, we're only having a public hearing about the budget. If there's other topics that you want to talk about tonight, we will do that later in our process. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak and address the public, no problems there at all. So is anyone at this time have any questions or comments about the budget or the process at this time? Okay, appreciate that. Hearing none. And then we've got some extra copies up here. Somebody wants a hard copy, there's about four copies there, you're welcome to get those. But at this time, we'll adjourn our public hearing. We'll close that out. Thank you, Joe. We are still Thursday, September the 13th at 6:07. We'll open up the meeting for our regular scheduled meeting. It is 6:07. We've already done our pledge to our flags and our invocation. We've got a lot of prior minutes here from prior public meetings that we've had on the millage rate setting. So if you have a packet, or also this is available online for your review, that we have the minutes from a special call meeting on August the 23rd that we had here at the Annex III Building on August 23rd at 6:00 PM. And this was to discuss and take public comment of the proposed millage rate for both the incorporated and unincorporated area. So is there's any questions or changes on those minutes before we sign those into the record? Hearing none, I'll sign those minutes into our record. Again, all of this information is on the website, and it stays posted there. So you can access those files in a PDF format, you can download those, save those to your computer, print them out, it's very user-friendly. Okay, we have also a, on August 23rd, a scheduled public hearing at 6:16. This was the, thank you, the second hearing on consideration of a rezoning for David Carlock that we ended up approving. So you have those minutes. Is there any concerns or questions on those minutes? Hearing none, we'll sign those into the record. Okay, then on August 23rd, after those meetings, we had our regular scheduled monthly meeting. So we've got the full agenda there. Any questions, concerns, comments on those minutes? Sign those into the record. Then on August 30th at 10:00 AM at the Civic Center in Walker County, we had our second public hearing to discuss the millage rate. That meeting started at 10 o'clock and adjourned to 12:15. Any corrections, changes, comments on those minutes? Lots of meetings lately. Okay, one more on August 30th back here at the Annex III Building. It was held at 6:00. This was the public hearing on the setting of the millage rate. Any questions, comments, or changes on these? Hearing none, we'll sign these into the record. We've kept Becky busy on minutes here. Okay, on August the 30th, we had a special call meeting to discuss the millage rate and set the millage rate. Also had a couple of other resolutions. Any questions or comments, concerns about those meetings? Sign those into the record. Okay, now we can get to where we can move forward. Under new business item number one, we have a resolution R-035-18, a resolution of sole commissioner to award a road paving project for Nikajack Road and Nikajack Lane. Resolution R-3518, resolution of sole commissioner of Walker County to award a road paving project for Nikajack Road, excuse me, Nikajack Lane. This is over in Flintstone Community. Whereas OCGA 324-68A provides that where a contract has been let for bid for the county by a resolution entered into the minutes shall award a contract to the lowest reliable bidder, provided that the county should have the right to reject any and all such bids. And whereas Walker County, Georgia, let bid for road paving project on Nikajack Road and Nikajack Lane. And whereas the amount of four bids, only two bidders completed a site visit with the Public Works Director, or Desi Neay, as required by the contract documents in term of the award. And whereas between the two bidders who fully completed with the requirements for bidding, Tally Construction presented the lowest bid. Therefore, be it resolved by the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that the contract for paving in Nikajack Road and Nikajack Lane is hereby awarded to Tally Construction in the amount specified in the bid packet, so resolved and adopted the 13th day of September. They plan to start on this project about the second week of October, and this project is scheduled to be completed on or before November the 1st. Nikajack Road is the road going up Lookout Mountain there in Flintstone. As we discussed prior, the state of Georgia, they told us from the amount of accidents and reports on that road, that that was in the top of one of the most dangerous roads in the state of Georgia as far as a county road due to the elevation and the deterioration of that road. So that's, these are our first two road projects out of our T-Splash. And so we were using our current T-Splash dollars to do this, and so we have the funding. It will be paid for these with cash money once the project is completed. Any question or comment on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll sign this into the record. All resolutions have to be attested by the clerk. Okay, second item is resolution R-36-18, a resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County setting the county supplement and compensation for Walker County State Court Solicitor. Whereas OCGA 15-1867B provides that the county governing authority is authorized to supplement a minimum compensation to be paid to the solicitor general of the State Court of the county. And whereas upon retirement of the current State Court Solicitor and the uncontested election of the State Court Solicitor in November, there will be a new State Court Solicitor in Walker County. And whereas the minimum amount of compensation to be paid to the solicitor under local law is less than $84,000 per year. Whereas the governing authority believes that $84,000 per year is the amount comparable to State Court Solicitors in other counties in the region and counties similar in size to Walker County. Therefore, be it resolved, the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that the county supplement to the minimum compensation to be paid to the solicitor assuming office January 2019 shall be in the amount, shall be in the amount which shall be make the total compensation of the state solicitor $84,000 per year, so resolved and adopted the 13th day of September 2018. Any questions or comments about setting the State Court Solicitor saddle? Sign this into the record. Give y'all a little bit of narrative on this. I'm not going to read this one all word for word because we get into degrees and lot lines and so many feats and points and things, and it'd just be totally confusing. But I will read some of this. Before I do so, last year soon after I took office, I received a phone call from sole commissioner Jason Winters of Chautauqua County to inform me that Walker and Chautauqua County had a border dispute that had been pending for several years that had never been resolved or settled, and that it had made this all the way up to the governor's office. And so the governor had appointed a special surveyor by the governor to come to try to resolve the line border dispute between Walker and Chautauqua County because there was a wooded and farmed parcel that was being taxed by both Chautauqua and Walker County both. And so Walker County was formed in 1833, but they waited until I took office for us to get this taken care of. So once we had a couple of conference calls with the Secretary of State's office and the special surveyor, and we started seeing how expensive and out of control this thing was going to get, all parties involved agreed to use a local surveyor, being Mr. Charles Wardlaw, who had extensive experience surveying properties that were in and around U.S. forestry boundaries, and understood the terminology and the type of surveying work that was done back at that time. So everyone agreed that what he come with the outcome and would determine, what everyone would agree to. And so he did determine that the property in dispute actually was rightfully part of Walker County. And so this here is a joint resolution for all parties, the property owners, both counties, everyone involved is easily agreed and compromised outside of not having to do any type of court proceedings or anything like that, that this is correct and accurate, and that some of the maps that had been done before, just some of them, they were just wrong. And so everybody is good with this. So this is a concurrent resolution of Chautauqua County, Georgia, and Walker County, Georgia to resolve uncertainty concerns of county boundary line. Whereas Chautauqua County, Georgia, and Walker County, Georgia have each been taxing the property, more particularly described as follows. All the tracks are partials of light landline in between Lot Lines 324 and the 26th District and 3rd Section of Walker County, Georgia. And being a part of the property as shown on the plat by Charles D. Wardlaw dated July 5th, 2018, and being more particularly described as following, I'm not going to read that data there of those lot lines, but will drop down here, it says, whereas both counties have sought to determine determination of the county's boundary lines from the east right-of-way of Western Merchi to the west boundary of the property owned by the United States of America, U.S. Forestry Service located within Lot Line 323 in Walker County, Georgia, and Lot Line 2 in Chautauqua County, Georgia. Whereas determination of the county boundaries was initiated pursuant to OCGA 363-20. Whereas the commissioner of both counties have diligently worked to resolve issues concerning the boundary lines, so to minimize the costs and expenses to the citizens. And whereas mutual agreement, Chautauqua County and Walker County have agreed to the locations of the county boundary lines. Whereas Charles D. Wardlaw, registered land surveyor, prepared a plot memorization and agreement between both counties on the plot as shown in Exhibit A, which has been recorded in Plot Book 14, Page 3, excuse me, Page 238 of the Clerk of the Court of Superior Court of Chautauqua County, and Plot Book D, Page 329 of the Office of Clerk of Superior Court of Walker County. Now therefore be it resolved, the boundary lines separating Chautauqua County and Walker County from the east right-of-way of Western Merchi to the property of the United States of America, Forestry Service shall be shown in the plot attached therefore hereto and recorded in the office of the clerk of the court of each county. Being more particularly described, and again, it gives all the details of the lot lines and latitudes and all. So this again is a joint resolution, so there's places on here where the Chautauqua County will hold this in one of their meetings, and they will document this. We're doing this here, and we'll each both get an original copy. So I'm just proud to say that this administration has solved and settled a boundary dispute. So some say I need to work on the north end of the county now, but we'll let that be. So any questions or comments about this? All right. Resolution of sole commissioner of Walker County authorizing the construction and demolition C and D site decision to expand the existing C and D landfill site two at the Walker County landfill facility. Whereas Walker County government pursuant to OCGA 12-8-26 has conducted a city decision meeting with respect to the proposal C and D landfill expansion at the Walker County landfill facility located at 5120 North Mobile Top Road, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707. Whereas the proposed C and D landfill expansion at the Walker County landfill facility is consistent with and in compliance with Walker County zoning and land use ordinances. And whereas the proposed C and D landfill expansion at Walker County landfill facility is consistent with the current Walker County solid waste management plan. And whereas public input on the project was received in a public meeting held on September 13th, 2018. Therefore be it resolved, sole commissioner of Walker County, that the county approves the city decision pertaining to submission of the application to the George Department of Natural Resources, Protection Division, and Land Protection Branch Solid Waste Management Program for the proposed construction and demolition landfill expansion at the Walker County landfill facility, so be resolved and adopted 13th day of September 2018. This expansion, we've got about 12 more months on the current C and D landfill for where we have, will have met, met the capacity that the state has approved for us to fill that site. This Site Two is an adjoining property that the county bought several years ago that's already been completely fenced in and encompassed into that campus. And so if you go to the landfill now, you don't realize that there's a site there that's undeveloped. So it's, basically if you're looking at the animal shelter and to the land to the left of that animal shelter, if you're facing the shelter, is what's into this campus addition of this Site Two. So there's a lot of steps and processes that has to be done with the state to do compliance as far as evaluation of the land, engineering site assessment, monitoring wells that have been in place now for a couple of years to monitor any groundwater movement or changes. So thus far, everything has been in compliance. We continue through this process to get the green light through the EPD. So we have been working on this very diligently, led by Payne Gillie, who's our facility management there. So they've done an outstanding job of moving this progress forward. It's very important to Walker County that we have this construction and demolition landfill. It saves our taxpayers money from not having to haul this off to other counties. And so it's a, it's a real asset to Walker County to continue with this and with this expansion. So this process will continue through the state of Georgia, through the requirements that they have for us over the next year. And once we get final approval in her meeting, we'll have more information that will become public in our meetings to let y'all know as that process and approvals all transpires through the process of this expansion. So is there any questions, comments, concerns about this? Hearing none, we'll sign this into the record. Okay, we have a resolution 39-18, resolution of sole commissioner of Walker County to declare property of the Walker County Sheriff's Office unserviceable surplus and remove from the county inventory. Whereas OCGA 369-2 provides that the county governing authority shall have the control of all property belonging to the county and may, may by order entered into the minutes direct the disposal of any real property which may lawfully be disposed of and make execute goods and sufficient title thereof on behalf of the county. Whereas the sheriff has requested that the property listed in Exhibit A be deemed unserviceable surplus and further request that the property be removed from the county inventory, therefore be it resolved by the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that this property listed in Exhibit A attached hereto and may part hereof be hereby declared unserviceable and destroyed, further wish, so resolved and adopted 13th day of September. So the sheriff has submitted on September the 12th a listing of four Samsung Galaxy S7 cell phones that will be destroyed and are unserviceable. They've listed the IME numbers for tracking. So we will take this resolution up to fulfill this request that this is unserviceable property that will be destroyed. Any question or comment on this? Hearing none? Okay, now to some good stuff. Item number six here, we do produce monthly our Walker County departmental statistics. We'll highlight some of the things here. This is through August 2018. Our adoption and return to owners was 102 dogs for the month of August, and we had to euthanize only one cat. We have purchased some new software for the animal shelter that they are working on loading up and getting functional and operational that will help us manage all of our animals that come in and out of the shelter. And will make that operation more efficient, allow us to better track and manage animals that are on hold, animals that are quarantined, animals that are being sent to rescues or other shelters, and also the animals that are available for adoption. So with that software, it will automatically load this information on the animals that are available for adoption up to a website, social media that's out there. I can't think of the name of it right off, but, yeah, PetFinder. So PetFinder is a very popular database for animals that are available for adoption. So this will automatically do this. Where now they're having to do all that manually. So they have to edit manually the animals adopted or sent to rescue, then they've got to go back there and take it off. And sometimes there's a delay in that process being all manual. So there are times we have confusion and hurt feelings because an animal shows to be adoptable and it's already been committed to somebody else, and it was all being done with just pad and paper. And so we had a real challenge managing that data. So this system, hopefully they'll have up and running before the end of the month, 100%. And it will eliminate that issue that we've had. So some of you that attend these meetings or watch these videos know back a month or so ago, this was a real concern. So we immediately found a software that's going to be really good for the shelter and allow us to be able to manage that. Our code enforcements continue to do a great job. They found 274 properties in compliance, 117 citations for violations was written. Proud to report, there was 23 that were brought into compliance and was marked as closed cases. Our fire department still continues to act on our behalf of our citizens in first response by 545 calls for the month of August, and 462 of those by our first response vehicles. That brings their total up to 4,344 for the year versus 2017 at 4,742. 2016, there was 3,492. So we are projecting at this pace that our first responders will respond to over 6,000 calls in 2018, and that's going to be just shy of being double what they responded to in 2016. So we are responding to more types of calls that are medical-related, especially anyone with massive bleeding, head injuries, breathing problems, anything like that, that, you know, chance of, high chance of loss of life or additional paining suffering. We are responding to those. And so our team's doing a great job of responding to those calls and providing a higher level of service to our citizens than has been done in the past through that department. I really want to brag tonight on our Mountain Cove Farms staff. They've done a tremendous job increasing the number of bookings in that state at Mountain Cove Farms. Usually the summer is the slow season, and so you'll see there in August, they had 57 nights booked out, and July they had 62, and that's the slow season. So those numbers are up substantially. In 2016, there was only 162 nights for the entire year. 2017 was 525. We're already at 509 this year. We were well surpassed 600-plus nights at Mountain Cove Farms. So people are finding great value, great retreat using the cabins and the house, and so there's a lot of repeat customers in that number. And so can't say enough positive things about the staff at Mountain Cove Farms to make that a very great destination for Walker County and very pleasurable relaxation for our customers and our citizens and visitors that come to Walker County. Proud to support, we had 16 new family single home construction permits pulled that gets us up to 93 for the year, so we're very likely could pass our numbers from last year of 135. So if anyone tells you that nobody's moving into Walker County, the data shows otherwise. We're going to be well over 100 new single-family homes, new construction in Walker County in 2018, at 135 in 2017, and 123 in 2016. So we're probably approaching 400 new homes or so in the last three years, four years there. Public relations, we had 44 media impression stories in the market. We picked up 149 new Facebook followers, 44 new posts for the month, 24,789 visitors to our website, and happy to report that we picked up 54 new subscribers to our monthly e-newsletter. So if you're not on our e-news So if you're not on our e-newsletter, you can link to that on our Facebook page or our website. And Joe does a great job every month putting together about a five or six minute read of what's going on in local county government and gives you a quick update so you can keep up with what's going on in the county. Public works, this is a big deal, a thing that we've been working hard on is trying to patch and fill potholes. And I know this is a high concern for a lot of our citizens. We don't have data from the previous year, but in twenty eighteen, they've already have filled and are patched two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six potholes with five hundred and fifty-five of those being in the month of August. We've had some electrical issues with our truck, and so we hope maybe by this afternoon, they have finally figured out where that last electrical problem was that keeps shutting our truck down. But that truck is very capable of doing between seventy-five and a hundred potholes a day. So we feel like these numbers will come up because if we can fill these potholes and seal off the asphalt, it keeps the water from getting into the asphalt. And when it, in the wintertime, it freezes and it cracks and busts up the asphalt. So we're working real hard through the summer and upcoming fall to get as many of these areas sealed off as possible to keep from having additional deterioration in our roads. Our Walker County Transit continues to demonstrate and prove to be very efficient and effective for our citizens. We've had one thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight trips compared to sixteen hundred and forty-three the prior month. So we have had over fourteen thousand transit trips using our transit system. So it's a very valued service that we offer to our citizens. That officially adjourns our regular scheduled meeting. And as always on our agenda, we do open the floor to anyone that would like to make a public comment or address their county government publicly. We just ask that you come up to the podium to speak so we can capture this on camera so we can put it on our YouTube channel, and also we can capture your name if there's any notes or information that Becky needs to take so we can follow up. So the floor is open to the public. If anyone would like to address anything to do with county government, you're more than welcome to come to the podium now.
Hi, my name is Missy Hicks, and I'm here to represent Brown's Hollow Road. This has been a county road for twenty-six years. And we found out Tuesday from the bus transportation that we're no longer going to be on their route.
Just for the public though, you're talking about the county school bus?
Yes. The county school bus is no longer going to travel Brown's Hollow Road. Apparently the road has gotten tremendously bad, and it did. Over the summer, we stayed in constant contact with them because we knew school was going to be starting. So the public works come out, they threw billings down and filled some potholes, and as soon as it rained, it washed away. Well, then school started and the road started getting bad again. So the county come out and started really working on the road. And they were doing a marvelous job, but the machine broke down. But now that the machines broke down, they decided that they're finished with us. They're going to no longer run the road, which is a real inconvenience. Because we have eight families that live on this road, and the children get on and off at each individual house. And what happens when the father that works third shift is not at the end of the road to get the child? The child's going to have to be taken back to school. There's a special niece child that lives on that road. He has a disability that could be paralyzed at any moment. It's autoimmune disease. He cannot walk a mile to get to his house. If he was to come crippled and mow the road, nobody would know. There's nobody that lives at the end of our road, only when you get up into there. So we are going to be going to the school board meeting also. So we were just asking for some help.
Well, I appreciate you coming and bringing your family. Appreciate all of y'all coming to bring public attention to this because it is a very serious concern. I was personally out there last week when the patch truck was out there running. Fortunately while I was there, the patch truck was running, and I think you mentioned to me before this meeting that they've made a lot of good progress, and the road is better than it has been in many years.
It is very well better than it's been in many years, but to the school board, it's not good enough. It's too bumpy. They have busted tires. The front dash has been rattled loose. She's lost some mirrors. A belt keeps popping off because of the rattle, but these are issues that we face every day. We'll go get a new car, it's not a new car for long. It's just, it's a bad area, but the road is looking a lot better. But all of a sudden, they don't want to travel anymore.
Just so everybody knows, this is a very rural part of our county, down on the south end of the county. It's very beautiful land, a lot of good people that live out there. But it's about a half a mile of a dead end road that's got, what, about eight houses on it? So as far as our repaving and using our T-splash, we're trying to use those dollars to repave the highest traveled roads first because we've got a lot of roads. But we are working to do some maintenance on the road. We did get the truck going today, found we think the last electrical problem with the truck. So we're going to work to get him back out there as soon as possible to continue to fill these potholes. When this road was put in place, I guess it's probably been there over a hundred years when that property was established, but it's never, ever been paved properly or like a regular road out here. It's been chipped, sealed in the past. So what is there is maybe a half to maybe three quarters of mixed thick at best, and it's got potholes in it like crazy. And so the day that Mike was out there, he had filled thirty-nine of forty potholes before the truck broke, and there's probably that time's six or seven to go. So we were committed to get the potholes filled and get a smoothest surface as possible and get all this sealed. And so regretfully, the school transportation system took action on this before we could get that done. The residents have all said that they do see vast progress and improvement, and we're going to continue to work with that and reach out to the school system and see if we can get them to work with us so we can protect these children, especially ones with the health problems and all.
And there's wild animals down there now. We've seen mountain lions, we've seen a couple bears, and we've actually, what our greatest fear is if the bus goes, then the bus is not the only people's complaint, the mailman. He's talking about not going. Then there goes your garbage service. Then we actually had a house burnt down because the fire truck could not get to us.
That's been quite some, yeah, you was...
I was ten. That's what made it a county road. When that incident happened, my mother had been pushing it for years. But when that happened, that's how it became a county road. Because we couldn't even get EMS. So we're afraid when the bus stops running, everything's going to stop running.
And it's a very solid point. So we're committed to make maintenance improvements to it and try to get it as smooth as we possibly can. I believe we can accomplish that. We just need a few more days to get that done. But it is definitely a high priority for the county.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming. Appreciate all of y'all coming tonight. Okay, anyone else like to speak or address the county public? Please state your name, if you would.
My name is Sheila Massey. I live on Brown X six oh six Brown Hollow Road. The road has been in there, I know it since nineteen nineteen. And my grandfather Bobby, next year, it will be a hundred year old, has been preparing grandfather's road. What they're talking about, putting these children off the bus, that every afternoon, there's a curve right there, it's broken, there's a red there, at least, I know it, at least thirty this year. People pull their cars out going down the road. Six fenders, we have six, three six fenders living in there, and they are here to run back. Wild animals, we have that. We have two people up in Hollow on Ox, I'm the other, and then the other one is Mr. Tiff on the hill. We also have a ninety-year-old lady on a motor that is coming back home, you know, and we're going to need transit buses to come up in there, help us get her in and out. She's had a stroke, okay? All right, there's a four-year-old little girl that will be riding the bus next year, and she's going to be put out in our dirt road, that's her and father's vehicle. The mailman, we're talking with him, his boss is over him, has so much damage to his over there, they're going to pull and make him strike our mailboxes out from the front of our house and put it down on the road so everybody can, you know, go through and make. And I'm a trustee through the Social Security Department for my mother, so I have to get those, all that mail, bank statement, this and that in order to get, keep the records on her. There's, like I say, especially child, there's the taxes, we pay our taxes every year, we always have and always will. You take in twenty-five years, we've had no problems. And in our family, you know, it's just, I heard you talk about places under, you know, it's nice to have a place if they're, you know, people go this and that. But we'd like to, like, you know, our home, our next move, don't you? We were told May and May, we talked to a guy who came in there, he said that if we would give him to June the first, they would pay our, we, we, we even showed him where to put them. You know, it was said, but come June, July, August, we got the actual, you know, and it's, it's better. I'll bring you that. But my car is an older car, but it's got something in it that was, I mean, it's just like a, we had a bunch of cans in the back end of the car. And we're both, me and my husband, both are setting, you know, and it comes down to, you know, a lot of things that we have to do. My husband's been on a car, he has kinds of medicine in the bank. And, you know, to buy a new car, it's a small enough category, you know? But we need help in getting this drug finished as soon as possible with these children. I mean, I'm willing to jump in and help any way I can, but we also need help in the yard. I mean, we've been pushed back, you know, it's time to go, come to us.
Yeah, as we indicated earlier, the billings that they put down early in the summer, that did work, they washed out. That wasn't the right solution. So getting the hot patches going in there where they'll set up and harden. And so we're, again, we're committed to get this for this road's passable, and just bear with us a few more days and we'll do everything we can to keep it a hot horn.
But, you know, the mailman and the seven animals, there's different things that are involved. We didn't want to, you know, but we could go on with the bodies, but you know, got pretty much in that situation. But it really didn't make that late trip.
Absolutely. Totally agree with you.
The cars, I have been standing in that yard down there in the road, and a car coming around that curve and pushed, actually pushed my mom out of the way and put it in there.
Yeah, people are going through there too fast off that hill. I know right when you're talking about, and I did drive all the way back. I had the Mike that does the patching, he got the vehicle with me. We drove all the way back to the dead end, back over the bridge, and it's beautiful out there. And we're going to do everything we can to do our part and get it with those school buses and everything can run. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Got your word?
Absolutely. Okay, anybody else tonight?
First of all, hi, how are you guys? This was very interesting.
Where have you been?
This is my first meeting.
Where have you been?
Busy, busy.
Have you jealous of your name?
Oh, very busy life. My name is Tominae, and I actually didn't intend on addressing this question, but when you brought up Mountain Cove Farms, this has popped in my head every year, bikes, the bicycles. I don't know if you guys ever drove through the beautiful Kensington or Cove area once spring hits up until about fall. Makes my heart stop constantly. It, it's just, it's like Russian roulette every time the bicyclists are on the road. My question, a lot of people within the community that we discuss quite frequently, is, is there anything within the county's capability to make it safer? We're talking windy country backroads. Hundreds of people Sunday drive on. I mean, we get so much traffic for people going to Mountain Cove Farms because it is beautiful, actually. That was family owning, my family, I have a grandfather buried out there. Beautiful, beautiful area, a lot of people like to come and just drive through and view it. And once the warmer weather comes, it's, it's very dangerous. And I don't know if that's a state thing, if that's a county thing. I'm here more or less to put a bug in your ear, as I was sitting here listening, to kind of see if you guys quit starting thought process. We actually did have somebody die, I think it was last year or two years previously, on a bicycle, met the car, and it did not end well. Community lost somebody. But we're talking groups, groups at a time. You're very familiar with what I'm addressing. And for those of us who are patient behind the wheel of the car, it's not that big of a deal. But the issue we ran into is you have eighteen, nineteen-year-old drivers with their friends and their trucks, they don't want to wait for a safe place to pass a group of bicyclists. So you have them coming into oncoming traffic where you have your bicyclists not moving out of the way. I know it's not feasible to do a bicycle path because you're talking state highway and county roads. You're talking a very large endeavor that's probably not only out of the budget, but an impossibility. But I would just plan a little seat to see if maybe there's something somewhere down the road, because I feel like it's just a matter of time before we hear on the news another bicyclist or a wreck or a car accident. Even if it's just a public awareness meeting every year, just to bring attention to the issue, how to navigate the roads when the bicyclists are on it. Just to bring the community in awareness that this is a situation, it does get dangerous and, because it increases every year. And we went from a few to several.
Yes, I heard you. There is a high level of awareness about this already. I want you to know that. We're working with partners at, at the state and these tourist ideas of obviously, you know, we're promoting the beauty of our county and through Walker Rock. There is a high level of awareness, and it's not just for us. This is all across the state and all across the region, this awareness for bicycle safety and motorists' safety as well, because you're trying to do all that passing. So there isn't a solution per se that's available to us at the moment, but we are working with the state, and these educational campaigns are helpful. And the idea in the future for us that there would be bicycle paths is not off the table in the future. But these are things where we find these grants and we work with state agencies where they have these grants, they're available. And in this region, up in Chattanooga, they have secured over the years a lot of these grants, and it's really helped them. And we're on it, but I can't in good faith say there is a solution because the motorists and the bicyclists both have rights to use those roads. So I think, I wish there would be a solution to convey, but I want you to know there is awareness of it and that we are consciously moving towards finding a solution.
I understand the complexity, because it's not like it's one road, and it's not like it's one area, one day, one group. It's a very complex, very interwoven situation with a lot of issues mixed into it. But it does make me feel better to know there is awareness. So the next time the conversation comes up, we're talking churches close sometimes. I mean, if an Ironman comes and things like that, I live in the Kensington area, and they'll just shut down a church. They'll just say, look, we're just not going to have service because you are not going to make it to us. You know, so at least now when people come to me and say, oh, I could say, you know what? It's, it's a work in progress, taking time. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Now, good. I want to add to this, it's not directed at you, but that the Ironman idea is very valuable to us. It brings great exposure from people that have, say they have, a lot of those bicyclists have disposable income, and when they see Walker County, they come back. I talked to... I talked to many of them this year from Ohio and Pennsylvania, and they said, I'm bringing my family back here. And that economic contribution to us eases pressure on property taxes, and that is the long-range approach. Walker Rocks is fun, but Walker Rocks is designed to bring revenue to us that takes pressure off of property taxes, so.
It's beautiful.
We consider it to our bicyclists, and we welcome them, but this, your issues are very real, and we are welcoming them.
All right, anyone else tonight? This one.
My name is Teresa Pogusian, I'm in the area of Brown Hollow Road. And I've heard from my sister-in-law from that, I just want to reiterate to you, it's not a convenience issue for us. It's a quality of life issue. It's the safety of our children. For over five generations, our family has lived on the farm, in our home, paid taxes, taught our children that to, especially government, to take taxes, do the right things. We're just asking that, that be better for us, and just not forget that we're there, but it's not, it's not just because it makes it easier. It's they rely on the road, rely on the bus, rely on everything that's on the road. Just to reiterate to you guys, that it's not only its necessity, its safety, its quality of life.
Yeah, y'all definitely, you've got a real problem, and fortunately, that area where the road is, it's pretty level per se for a road, and so it's not going to take an overwhelming amount of resources to get it back where it's due to be driving. But it, it is something that, y'all are not just making this up, I've, I've been there, and your, your concern is a hundred percent valid, no question about it. So we, we can get this, this dressed and make it a lot.
We appreciate all that has been done, all your concern and your time, and we do understand where you are, you know, you're, you have to, you have to share constraints, you have to realize where to put all of the money, and you get to understand that.
We do have the resources to go in there and get all the holes patched and filled and leveled everything out.
We were told it would never be paid, and we've kind of.
I would never say never.
You know, that would be like, you know, country.
Never say never.
But once it, once.
But as you say, in a hundred-plus years, it's never really been paid. It's been chipped, sealed, which is an old inexpensive way of keeping the mud down.
Yeah, it was our great-grandfather taking notes and killing trees down, and it was our grandmother pulling, you know, helping pull trees with our grandfather. It's not just a road to us, it's a life, and it's, and it's going to continue to be. Our children are already moving, you know, as they, my sister's child is already moved up there. It's not like this is going to be a life thing for us. This is a foundation, I mean, I know that's what Walker County is about, we were brought up here, and it's, it's a lot of, we're a pretty much rural county, and so I know that it's not just us. To us, it's, it's a kind of a movement, and our mother passed away almost four years ago, and it was her mission, once we watched, when I was in fifth grade, watching my house burn to the ground, because I couldn't get out to it, the fire truck bottomed out, and couldn't get up the road, so you're standing on the bottom of the hill, watching your homework, and her and my dad raised it up from nothing. You're watching that, and you hear her, and so we get a question, because it was her legacy to us, and that's why, you know, we, we didn't stop her from that, and, but I wanted to come. My little boy is still a fed and warm, and most important thing to tell him is you fight for what you believe in, and this is something that gets personal to us. And we just actually want to reiterate that, and we've heard that already and all the stories, but just to let you know the faces that belong to that road and to that story will continue, and we invest in Walker County, and we just ask for investment in our children's safety and their future.
Yeah, a little more to add to that, from what the state shows in our database, there's about twenty-three miles of what they classify as undeveloped roads that are county roads, but they're not fully developed, and that is a half of a mile of twenty-three miles in our county. So we've got about eight-hundred miles of road in Walker County, and this is a very critical stretch of road, and it's very important, there's a lot of, it's, obviously, you can see tonight, it's very good families that are very much the heritage of Walker County, and so my administration, we're going to take this very seriously, and I know there's been a lot of neglect and a lack of attention from past years, if this thing wouldn't have gotten to this point, but we're going to address that and try and move this forward very quickly. Thank you for coming. Okay, anyone else tonight? All right, okay.
I'm Bridget Shaw. I live on Brown Hollow Road. I moved up there three years ago. I have three kids. I've got one that's in middle school, I got another being in middle school next year, and I got one that's at elementary school. And the way the bus runs, like I said, drops them off, sees somebody up there, and pick them up. Should we fire stuff, because the other ones are older enough, they ought to be in the school. Now, they were saying, you know, you got special needs kids, I know y'all tired, but it's not like it's a project that's going to come and go. We got families up there for years, and it's not like, well, you know, if it wasn't for our kids, yeah, we'd get new cars, yeah, we, we wouldn't worry about it as much. But the reason we're so strong is because we've got kids. All of us, we put our kids down there, they ride their bicycles, we ain't got nothing but nothing. If it wasn't, we wouldn't worry about the road, it'd be getting done. But when they're saying that the buses won't come, this and that, and they're talking about third shift, me and my husband work office shift for our children. I have worked in Doughton, I was at Doughton for fifteen years. And I drive, I went back to Walker County, because that's where my home is. That's where I love, I serve my front porch, and I love my home. I love seeing my kids grow up there, and they'll be there, I've got acres. If there ain't nothing but my mom, my daddy, I've got ten acres. My kids ain't going nowhere. When they have kids, look at that, I can look up my steps and see my mama, see my cousin, and hear them playing, and they're not going nowhere. So it's not a project, we're going, oh, well, these kids are going to graduate, and so we don't have to worry about. It's a, we all got ten acres over, every family different got some acres, you know? And if you can tell, they don't even get to their life. And our kids are going to be the same way. I mean, I was raising my cousins, they were my sisters, and I want my kids to have that same experience with them as I did. So it's not just about, like I said, it's not just a road, it's our home, it's our everything. Even, I mean, I recorded the bus today driving up the road to show how smoothly and all the potholes have got since, y'all done all that great work. Because like I said, my kids get on the bus, I work nation. My kids are, right now, I took my little babysitter, and I got Aunt Liz across the street, and she'll watch my kids get on the bus. In forty-five minutes, my kids are home alone, but my kids are old enough to be home alone. Like I said, they got, they're going to middle, they're going to middle school, the other one is going to middle school. But if the bus quits coming up there, like, like I said, they need a real lot of time, and the way I work in a meal, they're not very ignorant on the way we are. So when she, they only give us less than a way to say, okay, we're not driving there, and wait, and everybody end up hard using words, it's not a business, that's, I mean, y'all have kids. What can you do? You gonna quit your job, you gonna, you gotta make money, you gotta pay this, you gotta, and it's hard. And my kids are responsible, they, they get their stuff ready, and they walk down, and a lot of times, they're waiting on, waiting on the bus, and like I said, guy next door neighbor sees them, other ones sees them right here, a lot of times, they got leave, and then, okay, they got a special kid that can't really do all that walking. Lovely mine are healthy and I'm blessed, but it's just our home, it's our.
Well, we appreciate, we appreciate you coming and sharing with us, and we'll, we'll get this tape cure out. Thank you so much. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we appreciate everybody coming out tonight. It's seven-oh-three, and we hope everybody has a safe journey home, and look forward to seeing you back here in a couple of weeks. Thank you.